Here. Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Cassio. Chairperson, Mr. Carey.
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Ryan Fazina.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. If we could stand and have Mr. Donahue lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no student-staff recognition tonight. Moving on to approval of previous minutes, do we have a motion to approve the September 27th, 2022 regular meeting?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments or discussion? Seeing none with a motion and a second, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
So noted.
Thank you. Motion carries. Public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You have five minutes. Seeing none, public comment is closed. Communications, Mr. Emmett.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. A few items this evening for you. So I provide an update on a situation that had occurred at one of our bus stops back in September involving one of our students. You might have seen today in the media that the Weathersfield Police Department, after an extensive investigation, executed the arrest of two 16-year-olds for the robbery and assault of our student. Again, I want to say a special thank you to the Weathersfield Police Department for their diligence in making sure that our community remains safe. I know there was a lot of investigation that involved not only the Weathersfield Police Department, but a neighboring police department as well. So again, thanks to the police department. And speaking of the police department, just want to let everybody know, in the next couple of weeks, the Weathersfield Police Department will be doing training at Silas D. Middle School, very much like we invited our Crest Regional Team in back in August. The police department is going to be coming in over the next couple of weeks, the week of the 17th of October, and the week of October 24th to do training. This training will take place after the school day, and again, we'll turn the building over for them for training purposes. And again, we want to make sure any response that our police department had to make would be one where they are familiar with our surrounding. So I'm happy to be a partner there. Couple of other items, again COVID update. We continue to monitor cases. Over the course of the long weekend, we've had a total of nine cases. Again, the cases are really spread out across the district. We're not seeing anything specific in terms of an outbreak. We do continue to report cases to the Department of Public Health as required, and we'll continue to monitor for any cases coming forward. Again, we're hopeful that we can manage this as we get into the colder winter months. And again, from a historical perspective, we do see the numbers go up around holiday time. So again, thanks to parents for being diligent. I know we're giving out test kits. We still have them, so if you need them, do not hesitate to contact your school nurse. We continue to monitor transportation. I know Mr. Kazaka sent a communication out to Autumn last week. We have seen improvements overall in terms of the on-time performance, but there are still some gaps with some of our routes. Mr. Kazaka continues to be in contact with Autumn on a daily basis to make sure that these route changes get done and that our kids get to school as quickly and safely as possible. Couple of other items upcoming this evening. You'll see on the agenda, we've got the student achievement presentation. The board received some preliminary information last June. This evening, we'll have Mrs. Distoli, Dr. Zlaton, and Ms. Campbell come up and provide a more in-depth analysis of our student data. Upcoming board meetings will include a report on class size. You'll see that coming up at the next Board of Education meeting. We'll be seeing a presentation on the sites program. Ms. Friedus will be presenting that presentation at the next board meeting. And you'll see, we are starting to have meetings scheduled. Facilities and Maintenance Committee will be forthcoming on the 17th. The Calendar Committee will also be working in earnest very shortly to develop the calendar for the 23, 24, and 24, 25 school years. That will be forthcoming in the month of October as well. And with that, that is communications this evening. Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. There are no action items. Moving on to report and discussion items. Student achievement presentation, Mr. Emmett.
Yes. Mrs. Distoli, Dr. Zlaton, and Ms. Campbell will be coming forward. Board members, I'm sad to report that the projector here facing our screen is not working.
Oh, shoo.
The light, we believe, is burned out, so if you'd like to join me out in the audience.
Well, that sign did say it was like gonna burn out for like hours, right?
Exactly.
For like three years.
So head out into the audience. You won't see it on this side, but you will see it out in the audience. Thank you.
Do you feel like you're in a movie theater now? The lights are down, comfortable seats. Well, good evening. As Mr. Emmett already shared with you, I am extremely excited and proud to present tonight's presentation with Dr. Zlaton and Mrs. Campbell. It's the first time in 12 years and I've been able to, in a long time, to co-present this presentation. So we will be talking about the student achievement results from the 21, 22 school year this evening. So I think in many ways, we've all tried to erase last year or the last few years during the pandemic due to the shared trauma. And it's hard to kind of think back a year ago or two years ago and what was happening around us and what we were doing. So I want to start by setting the stage with you and think a little bit about how the school year started last year. So those schools consistently offered full-time in-person learning in the 2021, 2020 school year. It was far from a normal school year. And it still seems strange to talk about in-person learning for the whole year. We saw a drastic increase in student and staff illnesses last year due to the pandemic and the resulting quarantines and required isolations causing significant learning disruptions, especially during those winter months. We also saw a shallow substitute pool. We're creatively to attract talent through job fairs and retention referral bonuses. And despite the many challenges of social distancing and numerous mitigation strategies, our educators worked to counteract the negative effects of the pandemic. Yet, most, maybe all, have said it was the hardest year yet. We also saw an increase in unpredictable student behavior like no other year, especially in our younger grades. And despite these challenges, we are so very grateful for our educators who dug deep and exhibited a conviction to our students, but it was sure a tough year. Last year, we continued with our three priorities of empathy, achievement, and equity across the district. This slide is just a reminder of our three main priorities and the clear alignment to the strategic plan. So let's continue to set the stage. What is it, what did we see statewide? According to the Connecticut State Department of Education press release, statewide academic performance has not returned to pre-pandemic levels. However, smarter balanced growth results offered some encouraging signs of learning acceleration. Last year, across the state of Connecticut, compared to 2019, students in 2022 grew slightly faster in the elementary grades and in most grades in mathematics. So we saw some great growth in mathematics last year statewide. But even with these promising growth results, it is estimated that our students in grades four and five may be two to three months behind their expected performance. And students in the middle grades are five to seven months behind in English Language Arts and a year or more in mathematics. While we don't have data that continues to the high school level, we could also extrapolate similar impacts on high school students. So clearly, affirming what we already knew, the pandemic has impacted student learning. Another source of data is NAEP, the Nation's Report Card. Also saw math and reading scores plummet from 2020 to 2022. Again, yet another measure affirming what we already know about how the pandemic has interrupted learning. So we're gonna move on to some background demographics, some data, before we get into our achievement rescores tonight. So we want to set the stage by proudly sharing a diverse demographic data for our schools in our district. This shows you the number and percentage of students who identify as white, BIPOC or students that are biracial, indigenous, or people of color, number and percent of students of English language learners, special education students, and students that receive free or reduced meals, which is a number that continues to trend upward. So I previously, as we set the stage, talked about increased in students and staff absences during quarantine and isolation. This slide reflects the attendance rates of students who missed 10% or 18 or more days of school last year. So students who missed 10% or more of the school year are called, are considered chronically absent. The state target is to have no more than 5% of our student body at the school and at the district level chronically absent. Because we all know, if you're not in school, you're not learning the standards related to the standardized assessments. So we saw an uptick in both in Weathersfield and statewide on the percentage of students that are chronically absent. And you can also see the number of students per school that missed 10% or more of school. Some of this is COVID-related, and some of this is probably a aftereffect of distance learning, screen learning, changes in patterns, and some of the other factors related to strong attendance. Slide 10 shows the number and percentage of students in the high needs group. High needs includes students who receive free or reduced meals, special education services, or English language learners. Students may fall into more than one category as a high-need student. And at the state level, we often disaggregate data through high-needs group, and you'll see some of that this evening. This slide displays the amazing racial and ethnic diversity we have here in Weathersfield Public Schools, something to greatly celebrate. The diversity in our schools is one of our greatest assets. And for those of you that have been on the board for several years, you know that I always tell the story about looking at multiple snapshots. So tonight, I also want to remind you that there is always a story behind the data. While we have downloaded, sorted, arranged, and analyzed the data in hundreds of different ways, we must always remember that each number represents a student, a child, a brother, or sister, or grandchild. And each and every child has a different strengths and different challenges. Standardized test scores are only one way that we measure our success. While it's an important one, we also have to remember there's different ways to measure student success. So what else do we, what isn't measured by these standardized assessments we're gonna talk about tonight? Things such as digital citizenship and our students' flexibility with every, with the every-changing landscape of technology. I think every month, it's something different that we're teaching skills related to technology. Social and emotional skills and strong relationships our staff has with students and families. How we partner with families and engage families in different ways to embody that two-way communication. Teaching students social-emotional skills such as self-regulation, responsible decision-making, social awareness, resilience, and growth mindset. None of these are measured on the standardized assessments we're talking about today. We also have great success in athletics, music productions, theater productions, student leadership opportunities, just to name a few of the many things our students learn throughout the year. So please, as we're looking at today's data, please remember that the stories of our students and their families are behind this data, and every student and family has a unique story. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Campbell to talk about the Smarter Balanced Assessment results.
Good evening. The Smarter Balanced Assessment is comprised of an English Language Arts and two Mathematics subtests. The English Language Arts Assessment score is composed of four claims: reading, writing, listening, and research and inquiry. Students' overall scores are reported at four different levels. Tonight's presentation will focus primarily on students in levels three and four who have met the achievement standard or exceeded it. Last fall, the state of Connecticut did not release statewide aggregate achievement data for comparison. Instead, they encouraged districts to consider the Spring 2021 assessments as baseline data to be used to compare future results. That is what we see in this first graph. The percent of Weathersfield students scoring at levels three and four is slightly higher than it was in Spring 2021 and 11 percentage points higher than the state average for this past school year. Here we see that broken down by grade level, with grades three, four, and six indicating an increase over 2021. And here we can see the percentage of students in each of our six schools year over year compared to the state average. All schools are performing above the state average overall. On slide 20, we can see the distribution of proficiency levels across all grades three through eight for the English Language Arts Assessment. Our overall goal is always to decrease the number of students scoring in the red, not met, category, and increasing the number of students meeting and exceeding standard. This next graph shows us the percentage of students who have met or not met academic standard in each grade level, the standout being grade six with 68% of students at levels three and four. The next few slides show the percentage of students meeting the academic standard in 2021 and 2022 for each grade broken out by school. The dotted line marks the state average for 2022. Here you can see grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, and grade seven and eight. Related to our district priority number three, equity, we have committed to disaggregating more data by different subgroups inclusive of race and ethnicity. This data supports the continued work of the district's focus on the priority of equity and culturally responsive teaching. All subgroups did have a higher percentage of students meeting or exceeding standard this year compared to the 2020, 2021 school year. We continue to focus on strategies to narrow this learning gap. As Mrs. Distoli said earlier, the high-needs designation includes any students who qualifies to receive free and reduced-price meals for English, as an English learner, and students with disabilities. Weathersfield's data is similar to that of the state in that students who are not in the high-needs group are achieving at a higher rate than those in the high-needs group. We continue to focus on strategies that will help us narrow this achievement gap. The next few slides will address the Smarter Balanced Math Assessment. Similar to Language Arts, the Math Assessment score is composed of four claims: concepts and procedures, problem-solving, communicating reasoning, and modeling and data analysis. When we compare the performance to the previous years, previous year, excuse me, students in grades three through eight scoring at levels three and four in math is higher than it was in Spring 2021 and also higher than the state for this past school year. Here you can see that in grades three through six, there was an increase in the percent of students at levels three and four from 2021 to 2022. Grades seven and eight show a slight dip in the percent of students at levels three and four over the previous year, although both remain above the state average. This is similar to the trend observed across the state that Mrs. Distoli spoke to earlier. Here we see the percentage of students in grades three through eight in each of our six schools year over year compared to the state average. In this graph, you can see the proficiency level distribution of students in grades three through eight for the Smarter Balanced Math Assessment. This graph shows us the percentage of students who have met or not met the academic standard for each grade level. And the next few graphs will show the percentage of students meeting academic standard in 2021 and 2022 for each grade broken out by school. Again, the dotted line marks the state average for 2022. Here you can see grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, and grade seven and eight. Again, we are committed to disaggregating our data. As you can see here, the learning gap indicated in the area of English Language Arts is similar in our math data, with all subgroups showing a slightly higher percentage of students meeting or exceeding standards this past year compared to the 2020, 2021 school year. And when we look at our students in high-needs, in the high-needs group and non-high-needs group, the gap is similar to that of ELA. For both assessments, that is an increase over the 2020, 2021 school year in the percent of students scoring in levels three and four. The state of Connecticut uses a growth model as a metric for evaluating school district's success. Each student has an individual growth target on their, based on their achievement or proficiency on the previous year's assessment. The state scores district's performance with regards to growth in two ways. Growth rate, which is the percentage of students who have met their respective growth target, and the percentage of target achieved, which is the average percentage of growth targets achieved by all students. This slide shows how Weathersfield's growth compares to that of the state for English Language Arts for students in grades four through eight. Grade three is not included in the growth metrics as this was the first time that they have taken the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And this slide shows Weathersfield's growth compared to that of the state for math. Here you can see our growth metrics broken out by school for English Language Arts. And here you can see our growth metrics broken out for school, by school for math. And now Dr. Christina Zlaton will take things from here and talk about the Next Generation Science Assessment.
Good evening. The Next Generation Science Standards, or NGSS, Assessment is administered in grades five, eight, and 11. It measures student proficiency and rigorous science concepts and skills. Assessment items begin with real-world phenomena that engage students in authentic science experiences or engineering design challenges. Similar to the Smarter Balanced Assessment, student scores on the NGSS Assessment range from one to four. Here we can see the proficiency level distribution of students in grades five, eight, and 11 combined. And here we see the proficiency levels at each grade. This slide places Weathersfield students' performance in historical and local contexts. While the percentage of students scoring at proficiency levels three or four in Spring 2022 declined slightly in comparison to 2021, Weathersfield remained above the state average in 2022. When we disaggregate the data to examine the performance of students in the high-needs subgroup, we see that students not in the high-needs group achieved at a higher rate than those in the high-needs group. Our ongoing focus on achievement and equity continues to address this discrepancy. We now present data from the Last Link's Assessment. The Last Link's Assessment measures English language proficiency among English learners. It assesses academic and social English skills in the domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Students are scored in each domain on a scale from one to five. They reach mastery and exit the EL program after earning scores of four or five in reading, writing, and overall performance. The percentage of students meeting mastery on the Last Link's Assessments and exiting EL services in 2021, 22 was among the highest rates Weathersfield has ever seen. Additionally, Weathersfield saw the highest Last Link's Assessment growth scores in the last six years. Next, we turn to SAT data from the SAT School Day Administration. The SAT is a measure of students' proficiency in thinking, problem-solving, and communication, and their readiness for post-secondary learning. While the SAT is typically taken by high school juniors and seniors, only 11th-grade students participate in the SAT School Day Administration. The tests report scores in two domains: evidence-based reading and writing, and math. We first present the main domain and total scores for 2021, 22 and their comparison with scores from the previous year. These district's scores remain slightly above the state average. Now we share AP data. Advanced Placement, or AP, classes are equivalent to a first-year college course but are taken in a high school setting. Students earn scores on AP assessments on a scale from one to five. Weathersfield High School has increased its AP numbers in comparison to the 2020, 21 school year across all categories: the number of students taking AP tests, the number of exams taken, the percent of students earning scores of three or higher, and the average exam score. Finally, we have data from our Early College Experience, or ECE, courses at Weathersfield High School. ECE courses are offered in collaboration with the University of Connecticut and allow students to earn both high school and college credit. As you can see, Weathersfield High School has increased the total enrollment in ECE courses in comparison to the 2020, 2021 school year. And now I'd like to welcome back Mrs. Distoli.
So a lot of data, so let's talk about what's next. So I first want to start with a reminder of how we have reinvested much of our COVID-related grant funding into our interrupted learning over the last few years. So we have offered Class, or General Education, Summer School for the last three summers. This coming summer of 2023 will be the last year of grant-funded summer school for our general education students called Class. We've hired a math interventionist for each school. Our early data indicated during the pandemic that remote learning had the greatest impact on math achievement. So these positions allow a more robust intervention program, or SRBI, program to target lagging skills and address learning gaps in mass achievement. We have added an elementary family liaison position to partner and engage with more families, particularly our new families to our district. Increased family engagement is a research-based strategy and has positive outcomes for students and families. We've also contracted with ESS, or Effective School Solutions, to provide tiered mental health support. As you know, the data is clear, there's by far a greater percentage of students with significant mental health needs after the pandemic, and that trend continues. We've also invested in professional development, structured literacy, and trauma-informed practices. And as we presented to the board a year and a half or two years ago, we've reinvested into the rethink, rethink social-emotional curriculum and supports to support social-emotional learning within the district. So in your board packet, So in your board packet, you also have a copy of our District Improvement Plan for 2023. We have reviewed last year's plan, elicited feedback from administrators, and identified important action steps related to improving student outcomes for this year. You'll find the specific steps or strategies in that District Improvement Plan. Tonight, I'm not going to talk about each one of those steps, that would be way too long of a meeting, but we're going to talk about a little bit of an overview and our new theory of action for each of our priority. So Priority One is empathy, and our theory of, our priority is to build a positive, empathetic, and safe community and increase effective communication. So what's new this year is our theory of action. So we believe that if we explicitly teach social-emotional learning skills and implement restorative practices, then we will build a positive, empathetic, and safe community, and each student will demonstrate growth in both emotional intelligence and academic achievement as collaborators, communicators, and problem solvers, which are the three main areas of our vision of the graduate. So you'll see the goals within our District Improvement Plan focused on social-emotional learning, implementing our core social-emotional curriculum, starting to integrate that within the teaching and further supporting the development of the emotional intelligence of our students at all ages. We also have, continue our work on restorative. It is year two, or in our plan, we start with year zero and year one, but we're on the second year of training core teachers at every school, starting to train our staff within our buildings, both certified and non-certified, towards more of a restorative approach, which is directly in line with a trauma-informed approach for our students and our staff. And we continue to focus on the health and safety of our students and our staff through other actions within this priority. So as we're going along through the different area of the District Improvement Plan, it's always important to remember that our District Improvement Plan looks at the larger picture of how we improve achievement within our district to impact our students and our families in the greatest way possible. Priority Two is achievement. Increase student achievement through implementation of innovative, inclusive instruction and evidence-based practices. So again, our theory of action says if we plan and implement student-centered, authentic learning and assessment practices, and continuously use student data to inform personalized instructional decision-making, then all students will demonstrate high levels of growth across skill area. So again, personalize our approach to meet students where they're at, especially important after this pandemic. So again, you'll see our priorities and our action steps focused around a vision of the graduate, the skills related to our vision of the graduate, using our data, identifying where students lag in skills as a result of remote learning or quarantine or isolation, and really teaching into those lagging skills, teaching into the standards to improve student learning regardless of where students start, ensuring that all students are growing. And a focus on improving practices of inclusive education for special education English language learners with a focus on different race and ethnicities and our high needs group. And our third priority is equity. We are committed to deliberately identifying inequities in our policies and practices that impact our community and change structures to ensure equitable outcomes for all, inclusive of race. So we believe that if we grow in our individual and collective social consciousness and deliberately identify and address inequities in current policies and practices, then we will holistically close achievement, opportunity, and readiness gaps while empowering all students to demonstrate growth and success. So our main strategies under Priority Three include continued work with our Social Justice Coalition. As you know, that's a town-wide focus on social justice. Each school has an equity team that feeds into our district equity team that meets twice a month, now in person. We just had our first meeting last month, last week, focused on improving our own social consciousness and looking at our school-based policies and how we can change and improve policies to improve outcomes for students and families. We also have strategies relating to recruiting, hiring, and retaining diverse educators and staff to ensure that our workforce mirrors our student body, and we have highly qualified, diverse educators and support staff supporting our students within the classroom. So those are kind of a brief overview of some of our next steps. Again, in your District Improvement Plan, you'll see some specific action steps related to the work we're focusing on this year, and the belief of all of those will improve student outcomes for the whole child, ultimately raise our standardized test scores, but also a larger measure of whole child and success as a district as we started talking about at the beginning of today's presentation. So with that said, any questions? And I guess at this point, we might return back to the dais with our microphones.
Does any board members have questions? Yes, Ms. Granado.
You know, I always have a few. I've never been a data person before. You really can get into this, and I do enjoy it now, I do. But I have a question on, do we ever follow a class? In other words, I saw, you know, grade six did great. Do we follow grade six as it goes to seventh, eighth, ninth, and all the way through? Not because, you know, it's another data point. I'd like to know how our curriculum is working.
We do have some cohort data. We didn't include it in tonight's slide. We analyze it in a lot of different ways, so I'd be happy to provide some of that for the Friday packet. There's a little bit of different grades over the same year, but I think what you're also talking about is taking the third grade class, what do they do in the fourth grade and fifth grade and sixth grade on different years? So we could provide a couple snapshots of that. Yeah, absolutely.
I would, you know, I just always think it proves to us that the curriculum is working, these children are growing. It's like that target idea that you give each child a growth target for it. I had another one. Of course, if I can read my own writing here. I'll wait, I'll find my other question if anybody else has one.
Dr. Regan Lefebvre.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Sally, for this presentation, which really was helpful to put this data into context. And as an educator, I never want to see other educators judged by standardized test results. We know that they offer an important picture but a limited one. That said, even though we're doing better than the state, it's like saying, well, my car is broken down, but I feel better because my neighbor's car is broken down, too. It's just not going to get us there. So we need to raise standards across the board. So I was wondering if you could say a little bit more detail about the action items regarding curricular revisions, getting on a curricular revision cycle, and also the implementation of UDL principles, and also the workshop model? So I guess what I'm wondering is how deep you think you need to go, you, I mean, really Weatherfield Public Schools, in looking at our learning models to get this achievement? Are we really identifying individual students who are falling behind, or do we think that there's a shift that needs to happen across the board in our classrooms or our curriculum?
We could talk about that over dinner all night, I think. That's a big question.
We should sometime, but yes.
And I'll invite Kristina and Dawn up, too, if they want to add on to my answer. So let me talk a little bit about curriculum revision and integrating UDL. So we have a lot of curriculum revisions to do, especially after the pandemic, but we are working through some new models. In the past, we've used sub-release time to do professional development and curriculum writing, but with the shortage of subs, it's hard to find time during the day. We did do this last summer extensive curriculum writing, and you'll see a lot of those curriculum coming forward through student programs and services this year. But unfortunately, not every teacher and every course is available to come in the summer, nor do we have the budget to do all that curriculum in the summer. So there's a little bit of a budgetary piece to it, but there's also a time piece to it of how we get that work done curriculum. It's a, we are of firm belief that writing curriculum and having teachers collaborate around our standards and instructional strategies in UDL will improve student outcomes. So the high school is also working to include some of that into the professional development days over time. There is a five-year cycle at the high school now, which is a requirement of NIESC, and so in order to do some more of that work, we have to use some of our professional development days to do that. So we're creatively trying to do it in the summer, during the school day, and working on curriculum revisions that way. Same is true for middle school. Elementary is a little bit of a different model because we have more teachers per grade level and different ways to do that at the elementary level. We definitely, definitely look at data at the student level, so while we did some aggregate data, at least three times a year, every school looks at their fall, winter, and spring assessments down to the student level, but looks at trends in data. So we look across multiple assessment measures, including classroom recommendations of the teacher, we look across attendance, and we look at our social-emotional assessment, and we look again at that whole child and trying to meet their needs and plan instruction, but also interventions through our intervention or SRBI program also. So absolutely, and I would say on a daily basis, our teachers are looking at the measures and the assessments they have to inform instruction to meet individual students, with a large focus over the last few years on small group instruction. So knowing that a class lesson might be okay for a third or less of your students, too hard for a third-year students, and too easy for your third-year students, we use the workshop model. So we have a mini lesson, so some new learning for all students, and then we group students based upon skills, so we can have targeted practice or instruction based upon their just right readiness level to ensure that they're growing within their independent level. What other questions did you have in there?
I think that's most of it, but if I could ask one follow-up, and maybe you can't answer this now, but I'd be curious to know if we are supported with enough staff to make sure the workshop model functions at the elementary level.
I would say, and then I'll ask Ms. Campbell, I think that we, I think one of the hard parts over the last few years is many of our coaches are becoming long-term subs and short-term subs. So unfortunately, with our staffing concerns, lack of subs, and again, high absent rates due to COVID and quarantine, the ability to coach often is, doesn't happen because our coaches and our experts are covering classes due to the lack of substitutes.
Academic coaches.
Yes, yes, yeah. Oh, yes, thank you, yes. Our curriculum specialists, they'll be coaching language arts, math, science, and so the ultimate ability to help grow and teachers plan and learn new curriculum, implement new curriculum, new tools, and all the things that we help and believe that they need, well, they ask for help and support, not just saying, here's our, so for example, we're having a new math program, we don't want to just say, here's the math program, go teach it, right? We want to provide support, ongoing technical assistance, guidance, shortcuts, and things to help improve student learning. That takes time of professional development, but when our experts and our coaches are pulled to substitute, teachers don't have those tools or supports available.
Sally, I would also say, too, just to add on to what you were saying, I think the piece, especially around the reading, Dr. Regan Lefebvre, is the professional development piece and really recapturing that fidelity to the workshop model. You know, over the past several years, we've started to see retirements, and, you know, what we used to have here in Weathersfield, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Sally, I believe four of our schools were project schools. So we had embedded professional development where we had consultants from Columbia in working side-by-side with our teachers, with our students. And obviously, you know, there's a time factor involved with that, there's a human capital factor involved with providing subs. That has been an increasing challenge, but that was one thing we saw historically that resulted in some really positive results academically for our kids.
Do you want to add anything on?
So I think one of the important things that hasn't been highlighted yet is that there is ongoing work in examining our existing elementary curriculum, both BLA and math, along with science and social studies. Everything is getting attention, but right now, we've taken math as a priority. You can see in our data why, and that's a statewide trend. So we have the unfortunate fortune of having our existing math program not being published any longer. So we are investigating resources that will better suit the workshop model in the way that we know that it needs to be used than the one that we currently have. We're piloting two different programs that highlight things like student discourse. They have tasks that are what are considered high-floor, low-ceiling, no, low-floor, high-ceiling, just kidding, meaning everybody has an entry point. So everyone can work on the same task, but attack, attack it in a different way, opening up all kinds of opportunities for kids to work together and talk about the math without having to tackle a problem that's too hard or too easy and then get bored. With our language arts curriculum, we've examined a couple of areas that we didn't feel like we were addressing and recently implemented this year, last week. Professional development was provided to implement the new Hagerty phonemic awareness program for our kindergarten, first, and second grade students, because phonemic awareness seemed to be an area in our curriculum that was not explicitly highlighted and taught. It was there, but it wasn't explicitly obvious to everybody where it was, and it's an important piece in the research behind how good readers become good readers. So we've begun implementing that. So those revisions are happening on a continuous basis. They're not, it's not on a cycle, but we're just continuously analyzing what we're seeing in kids' work and in our data and taking a look at where we need to fill gaps.
Can I ask a follow-up? So in the, and I'm going to mispronounce this, the Hagerty phonemic awareness that we just started.
That was awesome.
Thank you. I've never heard of that, but that's okay. Do we have, like, are you using a data point so we know, like, the effectiveness, so at the end of the year, we can say, okay, so this worked or this didn't work as we're implementing it?
Right now, we are implementing it, just the teaching component of it.
Okay.
We'll be able to track some of the long-term effects, so kind of like if you, if you eat well, right, and you're planning to gain weight, and you eat certain things, you're going to look at your weight to figure out if that happened. That doesn't mean that it's not doing other things to your body. You could test other areas to see if your, things are changing. So we would look at things like our STAR assessment for like a holistic picture of whether or not growth in reading is improving for those students. Our BAS assessment, we would use that as well. There is an assessment component to the Hagerty program. We chose, at this point, not to use it until our teachers are comfortable with the teaching of the program, and then we will examine whether or not it's something that we want to layer in as an assessment along the way.
Okay. I mean, my question is, and I'm not questioning, I just want to make sure if we're adding something, that there's a value additive to it, so if we're putting it on the plate, I want to make sure that it's assessed and that we can show that the outcomes, there's an outcome to it, right?
Absolutely. It's one of, so phonemic awareness is one of the most important aspects of learning to read. So kids who really struggle later in comprehension and decoding with multi-syllabic words will often come up as having a phonemic awareness gap. Phonemic awareness is, and I'm going to not say this completely accurately, I know it, it's the way we associate the sounds in our language and the way we hear them and interpret them. The phonics is that grapheme component when we add letters to it. We've all, we've been teaching phonics for years now. What we weren't explicitly teaching was that sound piece, and without that sound piece, it makes it that much harder to decompose words later that are much bigger. So we would hope that in teaching this explicitly later, as they're taking their STAR assessment and things like that, decoding will become easier.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much for that explanation.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Drew.
So the slides that really stuck out to me were the high needs slides, and so I want to know, is there any data in regards to what the levels are on a state level so that we can compare? And two, what are we doing specifically to target these students? Now, I mean, I know we have like a whole holistic, but what are we doing for these kids that are obviously struggling?
Yeah, I think you bring up a really good point. Connecticut has the largest achievement gap around the state, and so this is some of the work statewide, but also within Weathersfield that we're doing. So we're doing a lot of work around inclusive practices, structured literacy, and special education students. There's a lot of, a lot of different strategies within our District Improvement Plan and within their department plan. One thing to recognize is our English language learners. If you are new to the language, you're not expected to score well on grade level, right? So the data will be a little skewed, and what's interesting about English language learners is once you've met the state's level of mastery of language proficiency, you're no longer an English language learner, you're exited out of the program. So that data for those subgroups of our English language learners, we wouldn't expect them to be performing on grade level. If I went to a, if I went to China and had to take a standardized assessment in third grade, I wouldn't do well, right? That's part of my learning profile of learning the language, learning the L That's part of my learning profile, of learning the language, learning the alphabet. And so we have to look at that subgroup and say, there's different students in there with different skills and challenges. So we do, we do disaggregate our data, our attendance data, our achievement data, and look at students from free, qualify for free-reduced. One of the challenges is that group has confidential data. So schools don't necessarily know, or schools don't know, as students that receive free-reduced lunch, because that's a confidential data point. So we have to look at all students and ensure all students are growing and performing on grade-level standards or providing that tiered intervention program through SRBI or other interventions. But that's also some of the work we're doing through our equity team, looking at approaches, both to, both socioeconomic, families from different culturally backgrounds, and make sure that our schools are welcoming, culturally responsive, buying diverse literature top sets, so students see themselves within the literature, and other strategies related to that. But that is a focus area, but only within the schools, but statewide around closing that achievement gap of our high-need students.
Any other questions?
Mr. Riley.
I have a follow-up on that, on that question. I mean, I, I know that one of the achievement goals is to focus on special education groups, and I heard a lot about free lunches and diversity. I guess what my question is specifically, the special education aspect of that, what can you tell me is specifically being done? And obviously, you know, my son's in special education programs, and so I'm asking kind of a specific question, and you may not have the answer for it at this moment.
Yeah, I can share a little bit, though. So there is a large focus on structured literacy, again, for those students that have reading goals, specific OG training and with around structured literacy. So we've trained teachers, continue to train teachers, and two teachers are actually part of a, kind of an expert train-the-trainer that will continue to train our teachers around structured literacy. Statewide, we're all going through the implementation of CT-SIDS. Well, that is a painful implementation of a new software program. The net result, when we can look backwards and say, okay, it's better, is to develop an IEP that has value added, and we have greater growth for our special education students. So the kind of the, the process of developing the IEP will change to help improve outcomes for our special education students. A lot of work around inclusive education. We know that including students in heterogeneous classrooms or with peer models has positive outcomes for all students. So really working through some co-teaching opportunities when possible, so that you have a general education teacher, a special education teacher, working with the class around skills, and two teachers working within both special education and general education. The research behind that is very powerful and supportive for students. A lot of ongoing training around different modalities of instruction. We firmly believe our restorative work around culture and climate and restorative work will also improve outcomes for our special education students. And I think what's really interesting about special education is the wide range of skills of our students, right? And equipping our teachers with a lot of different research and evidence-based programs to help students from math goals to behavior goals to reading goals, to functional skill goals, they have a wide scope. And so providing them high-quality assessments and tools and programs to help target the learning profile of that student.
Thank you very much, and I'm aware of some of these aspects. I know, you know, generally, you have, you know, times of special education that are one-on-one, and sometimes, you know, it's a general to make them feel, you know, make everyone feel inclusive in, you know, into the school environment. So, so I certainly appreciate that. And the, yes, the new Connecticut process for, you know, IEPs is certainly difficult at best.
Um, so.
But I'm sure we'll get to it. Thank you so much for your answer.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Lacavoli.
Mine is more like a general question, sort of maybe an opinion question, I'm kind of polling you all. It has to do with federal funding and learning loss. So, I mean, towns got all sorts of money, some for general use, some for education. Did you feel like the amount of federal pandemic relief money that you got for the education system was sufficient to help you do what you, what was asked of you? I mean, the more I sit in on these, on these presentations, it's like, wow, besides people who are in the healthcare system, the pandemic fell very hard on educators and people working in school systems. And personally, I think that towns got a little too much for general use, and maybe more of it should have gone to the school systems. But did you all feel like the amount of money that was given or provided was sufficient to, for what was asked of you? Do you see what I'm saying?
That's a loaded question.
No, I know. It's a tough one. It's kind of personal, but.
So I'll flip it a little bit. I think that the impact of the pandemic is not done in three years, right? And so our funding is roughly three years long. We have, you know, you saw some data statewide that our middle-grade students have, could be a year behind in mathematics, right? That is not a gap. Our mental health concerns of students is not a gap that we close in three years. The long-lasting impacts and shared trauma on our student learning, but also our staff, is enormous. We are, we have been incredibly lucky in Connecticut not having a huge teaching shortage. Other states around the nation have a huge teaching shortage. Personally, I think it's coming to Connecticut. Burnout, again, less support, less substitutes, lots of change, our, our climate and discourse that may not always be honest and civil, you know, that puts a lot of pressure on our staff. And, you know, research nationally is people are leaving education. So I would encourage people not to think about what happened the last, you know, few years and what, what was given, because I think in Weathersfield, we've invested it well. I'm more thinking about what happens in the future, because we still have social, mental health concerns and needs within our school and our state and our community. We still have learning gaps. You know, what is the lasting impact on reading scores? What is the lasting impact on graduation? And over time, we still have to continue to provide additional support. And when you think about equity, equity is not equal. Everybody doesn't get the same thing. But we have student groups and have been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic as adults and staff, and all of you in different ways, and we can't underestimate the impact that has had on our community and the amount of time we will need to kind of rebound that. And we, I truly believe personally that we'll see the lasting impacts of some ways that we haven't seen yet. So I would encourage people to think about the future as this money runs out. You know, what are some additional supports we can find our school system to attract and retain high-qualified teachers that will stay and be the, you know, the number one biggest impact on improving student learning is having high-qualified teachers in front of students. And so that's becoming harder and harder to do.
Yeah, I want to speak to that point too, Matt. I mean, certainly, you know, you can always use additional monetary resources. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. I mean, look, superintendents, we are good at spending money. I know that that's our reputation. But we spend money for the right reasons, and we spend money for kids. And what I would say with the funding that we did receive, you see that it is very clearly targeted. So, you know, from the math interventionists, that was an area of weakness that we addressed or we had to address far before the pandemic. So having that funding where we could go out and get highly-qualified math instructors to support our teachers and support our students was huge. Sally spoke about the issue of social-emotional learning. We saw behavior last year that we have never seen before, as these students came back in after being isolated for, in some cases, well over a year. You know, the other piece that we talk about too, like, I look at the, the class program. You know, we typically had only run our special education summer school during the summer, and over the past two years, past two summers, we reached just shy of 1,000 students two years ago, and we were over, I think, in the 1,100-student range.
Correct.
Of students that accessed, whether it be credit retrieval, whether it be enrichment. We provided our community and our students with a great resource. And for me, I'm already thinking ahead to, as Sally talked about, what happens when that grant funding runs out? I don't want to see the class program go away. I think it's a model for what we can do for our kids and extend that learning and decrease that gap, which inevitably, we see over the course of the summer, it grows. So, great question.
By no means was my question a dig, was, I'm thoroughly impressed with what you have done with the money, and I appreciate it, but I was just thinking about the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sally, that was, that really was a great answer. And my colleagues have done most of my questions here, but I still have one, and it's on chronic absenteeism. Is that a product of the pandemic? Because I know this was something the school system always worked on, and it seems to have just gotten out of sight right now.
It has. We are actually working on an attendance campaign to help educate our parents, encourage good attendance. Obviously, if you're sick, stay home, right? We don't, we want you, if you're not feeling well, to stay home. But I think that there's been some leftover impacts of remote learning and pandemic. Part of the pandemic, we did do attendance work, and we had almost every school below the 5% threshold, and so we had great attendance. And still, you know, working with those families that didn't, but within a reasonable range. I saw some data recently and last year statewide, almost 25% statewide, students were chronically absent.
Wow.
So as a district, we were around 13 as a district. As you saw, some schools where you opened up to 20%. You know, the middle school number last year really, you know, the 101 students that missed, you know, 18 or more days really impact student learning and, right, connected to your community. And again, there's stories behind all of those absences, some of them COVID-related or illness, or, but we need to do better with that, engage our students, welcome them in, and put some specific strategies. So we are working on a, an attendance campaign around some common messaging, looking back at our data, encouraging strong attendance. I think what the research tells us is if you're absent two or more days in the first month of school, you're more likely to be chronically absent. If you are chronically absent, less likely to graduate on time, right, lowest test scores, we can kind of think of all that data. But there's really a great cumulative effect. If you think that, starting even in preschool, that you miss 18 days, and you miss 18 days in kindergarten and first grade, and do that math, right, that quickly ends up to be a year or more of school. And so there's this cumulative effect, and research tells us if you have bad attendance at preschool and kindergarten, you're more likely to have bad attendance all through high school with lower scores, higher risk of dropping out, not graduating, and other high-risk factors. So we can't overlook the importance of good attendance, of supporting families to have healthy routines and to get their children to school. So that will be one of our focus areas this year.
And I know Michael's working on that too, right?
Yes, yeah.
Do you find that the, in regards to the high absenteeism, it correlates with being in the high-needs category?
Yes, we did do some data trends last year. Higher, certain racial and ethnic groups have higher absenteeism.
Yep.
Free-reduced students have higher absenteeism. Yes, so there are definitely some of those trends, again, mirrored statewide, but that will inform some of the strategies we use to ensure our students are engaged, want to come to school. And again, one of the biggest things is our work with building strong relationships, social-emotional, restorative, because if you feel like that family and you feel like somebody misses you and you're not, if you're connected to school, you're more likely coming to school. And so building those strong relationships is one of the most important things we do at school each day.
I mean, I know that one of your focuses this year is going to be the, you know, the absenteeism, so I just wonder if maybe that will, you know, spill over.
Yeah.
Into hopefully increasing those numbers for the high, because that concern, to be quite honest, that concerns me a lot.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we're, we're focusing on, you know, when you're only at like 25%, you know, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and there's definitely correlation, right? The greater absenteeism, the lower your test scores, I mean, there is a direct correlation there.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes, Ms. Roberts.
The family liaison, is that federally funded, that position?
It's, yep, it's grant-funded.
So that might not be going on for.
Well, yeah, so the additional, so we have Kim Bobbin, who's an early childhood and family coordinator. That is a district position, shared by the town and the Board of Ed. And then we've added another position in addition to that through the grant funds, who's a partner in, Jessie Pickett, who's a partner in doing this work and reaching out to new families and reaching more families.
Okay, so there's not like one per school? It's the two.
No, one, yes, yep. One additional person, which is elementary, so working with the five schools.
All right. I could see how that could be really important in the attendance and, and ultimately the scores.
Yeah.
And their academic, I mean, the main concern is that they become more connected academically again. I mean, that's the ultimate goal, and that we see some growth, but I can see how much you're doing, and it's a lot of balls to have in the air at the same time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, because we want to recognize that while classroom instruction is important, in addition, attendance, right, social-emotional learning, restorative, like, there's all these different, like, whole, whole-picture plans of targeting and improving student outcomes in a lot of different ways. And that's what we've learned, you know, back, if you remember, those of you that are on the board, you're in No Child Left Behind, just doing more math and reading doesn't improve ultimate outcomes. And so you have to really look at whole, whole child, engaging that child in learning, reflection, community. And so our class, our partnership with King for after-school, I mean, all of these community-based pieces are an important piece to help our children be engaged.
Well, I can see too, it's really with the liaison and all that you do, it has to be the whole community being on board and connecting and really wanting this to happen.
Yeah, most out clean. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
All right, so I want to follow up on a couple of Ms. Granato's questions.
Yeah.
I think she stole my notes personally, but I was doing my own analysis, so will you be able to provide us with longitudinal data on the S-BAC score? So I did it using your two years that you had in my own notes.
Yeah.
But I'd love to see the longitudinal of like grade three to four, or four to five as, as we go.
Yep.
And then when we look at this comparison, can we get a couple of years before too, pre-pandemic, to see the, the historical growth?
Of the district?
Yeah, of the district.
Yep.
Just so we can just see, as Ms. Granato said, to see how our curriculum had done prior to the pandemic and to see how it is.
It's true, though.
Posting notes, I know.
And I.
And it helps teachers too, to know.
I'm agreeing with you.
And Amanda.
You don't need to defend your position, I'm agreeing with you on that position.
And Amanda, you asked for high, I can't read my writing now, high-needs, more high-needs data?
Yeah, so what the state level, what the data was in regards to what the state is.
Oh, state, thank you.
So we can compare and see what.
Yes, state average, I missed that part. Thank you.
And then hold on, I wasn't done.
Yeah.
The chronic absenteeism, so my question was, I'm assuming we're up from last year? The slide didn't say, I mean, it was a lot. Are we up? And I'm assuming based on your comments that we were doing so well pre-pandemic, where every school was under 5%, that we're certainly up since the pandemic, correct?
Absolutely.
So that was, that was my question.
Since, yes, we were, I don't have the data in front of me, but I think district-wide, we were at four, four-point-something.
Yes.
And we're up to over 13% as a district.
So could you provide that through the superintendent on Friday as well?
Yep.
Is that all right? For some data?
Last year's chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, and then pre-pandemic too, just one year pre-pandemic, just so we have a baseline.
Yep.
All right. And he didn't give you your favorite, my favorite saying from you, Mr. Stoli, which is if you take a family photo album, you look at one picture, you can't judge the family by that one picture, you got to look at the whole album. So we can't judge the school system by one test. It's my favorite saying that Mr. Stoli.
That's right. That's right. Thank you for that, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Good memory. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thank you, everyone.
So much.
Well done.
We'll give our friend a second to put all the lights on and everything up. We'll give our friend a second to put all the lights on and everything up. Excellent. Moving on to announcements and information, board members making, make sure you're responding to emails about quorums. We're trying to get all our committees meeting, we're also trying to get that board retreat going, we need to make sure we're responding and giving dates. It seems to be a difficult challenge to get us all in one place at one time, so we will continue to work on that. There were no meetings held, meetings scheduled to the facilities and maintenance is 10:17:22 at 6:00 p.m., the correct council is 10:19:22 at 11:30 a.m., students, programs, and service committees at 10:19:22 at 6:00 p.m. There is no unfinished business, public comment. There's nobody in the public, the public comment is now closed. Board comment, anyone on the board wishing to make comment?
I just have some.
Yes, Ms. Granato.
I have a closing comment about the, Weathersfield Education Foundation had their fundraising benefit on Thursday, October 6th. The audience was informed and entertained by our own Weathersfield Public School graduate and WFSB Vice President Dana Lubin Nevz. Dana spoke about her career, her journalistic experiences and assignments, and the controversial world of news reporting today. All proceeds from the event will benefit the Weathersfield Education Fund to support academic programs and initiatives within the Weathersfield Public Schools. At this event, there was a table of our Weathersfield High School students funded by the Weathersfield Education Foundation, and as a school system, we work to introduce students to possible careers, and Dana was not only entertaining, but perhaps the motivation for a student to enter the world of news communication. It was a wonderful evening for us all. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Any other board members?
I just, I just wanted to.
Ms. Drew, yes.
I just wanted to say, this evening was the senior night for the cross-country team for both the boys and the girls. It was a wonderful event, there are 12 seniors that are leaving, three girls and nine boys, and it was a wonderful event, and I want to say congratulations to all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Regan LaFave.
Just to wish good luck to all our elementary school runners who will be attempting the Mikey's Place 5K on Sunday morning. I hope to see many of you out there running, all be running, or trying to run. It should be a great event, I'm really proud of these kids who have been working towards running five kilometers, and who will be out there with their volunteer parent coaches on Sunday morning, so come and cheer them along if you're not running yourself.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Riley.
The homecoming dance was at the high school last week, and from what I understand, it was well-attended, and everyone had a, had a good time.
Thank you. Mr. Fazina, the high school going?
Yeah, I was about to just mention, the homecoming dance was a pretty big success. The student council alongside administration did an amazing job planning it. I unfortunately couldn't attend, but plenty of my friends did, and I saw even more on social media. It was an incredibly fun event, and very well put together for the time in which they had to put it together. Our school and administration is looking forward for NIESC accreditation visit. We've worked towards this past school year and last school year on building the, the vision of the graduate, and to have that support our school, school body, and our core mission as Wesfield Eagles. And moving forward, we have very soon, Our Town, a play that's coming to the Wesfield High School, show dates are the 10th, 11th, and 12th, if you want to get that in your calendars, at 7:30 p.m.
What's the date again, Ryan? Have you?
Yeah, it's November, November 10th, 11th, and 12th, and the show starts at around 7:30 p.m.
Thank you.
We have another show, matinee, on the 13th at 3:00 p.m. And finally, I think I talked about this last week, but the school counseling office has done an amazing job developing and, you know, putting into full force the Wellness Center, which has provided a focus and a more targeted developmental guidance lessons for students who may be struggling with mental health, or just issues within their personal lives that maybe their academic curriculum cannot teach them. And it's done an amazing job focusing on mental health, and it's an incredibly safe space for any student experiencing difficulties throughout the day to attend and get a break, so.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Fazina. Anyone else? I just want to thank the high school administration and security staff, I've been at the last two football games, and they have been very well-attended, and they have done a great job keeping everything under control. I will say there's lots and lots of middle school kids and high school kids, and everything is under control, and it's, I'm very happy to see that, and it's been great, and the spirit there has been tremendous, so I want to give everyone a shout-out, and especially the student body as well for being very well-behaved and showing great spirit. Also, Mr. Fazina, I believe, the school spirit week was last week, right? And you had like anything but a backpack day, and I saw some interesting stuff on Facebook.
Very interesting.
Microwave, I believe, made it.
It did.
And a toolbox, and I think that, there was some very interesting stuff that made it to school.
Couple-gallon buckets from Lowe's, there was a, yeah, it was a full collection of, of hardware and equipment.
And then there was a tug-of-war on the, on the Cottone Field?
There was, there was a very interesting pep rally, which was also afforded by our administration and student council, that entertained students at the end of the day. I think it was a much-needed relaxing tone to set at the end of a week and at the beginning of a school year, that hopefully changed from, you know, the past couple.
Excellent, I just want to commend, I think it's great, all the things going on at the high school, and it seems to be setting a great tone.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just want to commend everyone.
I have one more comment.
Yes, Mr. Riley.
I think my daughter had a rice maker that she brought to school, and, and my son had a barn, so that's.
That was very creative.
That's what they use. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to move into executive session to discuss pending litigation, Christine Zerotny versus the Wesfield Board of Education? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.